Supervisor Collins, can you do an invocation for us?
Yes, sir, I can.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, once again we thank you for the beautiful weather we're having, corn's growing, and once again we ask for your guidance and your direction for this board to guide and direct us in carrying the county forward and guide our decisions tonight and the best of our ability to, for citizens of Frederick County. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Vice Chairman De Haven, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Can I face the pledge, the pledge, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there are no changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Amen.
Supervisor De Haven makes the motion, Supervisor Lofton makes the second. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Mr. Rowley, there are no consent agenda?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Did any citizens sign up for comments?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? If not, then we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting, June 25th, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, I have a move to accept the minutes as submitted.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Heps, not Supervisor Hess.
Supervisor Wells.
Supervisor Wells, excuse me. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The minutes of the regular meeting, June 25th, 2014, are approved. And now if Vice Chairman De Haven would assist me, we have a presentation.
George A. Hosby, please, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, sir.
Employee of the Month Award Program recognizes the county's employees as an important and valuable resource. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to present George A. Hosby for consideration as Employee of the Month for June 2014. George serves the Northwestern Regional Adult Detention Center and is an officer who can be best described as an all-around solid performer. He is very dedicated to his chosen profession, is very motivated, always gives a hundred percent of whatever task he is assigned, and is always pleasant dealing with others. Officer Hosby has demonstrated that he readily is available, fulfilling his very imperative statutory and portrays sound understanding that his availability can easily make a difference in a safe and secure workplace for all of the officers. Now you're hearing a motion to approve George A. Hosby as Employee of the Month for June 2014.
So move.
Your motion by Supervisor Lofton, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. George A. Hosby is hereby recognized as the Frederick County Employee of the Month for June 2014. The Board of Supervisors extends its gratitude to George for his outstanding performance and dedicated service and wishes him continued success in future cases. Thank you. All right, we have a recommendation from, for the Winchester-Fredrick County Tourism Board, what's the board's pleasure? It looks like this is one that needs to be contingent upon final approval by the city as well.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint Priya Patel to fill the vacancy on Winchester-Fredrick County Tourism Board, and should we recommend that to the city? Do they have to make a concurrent?
Concurrent, yes. Contingent upon their approval.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next is the Historic Resources Advisory Board, Redbud, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
The Development Impact Model Committee, we now have two recommendations, I believe. Yes. From Top of Virginia, what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend that Steve Pettler and Phil Lemieux be appointed.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wells. Any discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Steve Pettler and Phil Lemieux are hereby appointed to the Development Impact Model Committee. Next is the Economic Development Authority, I believe that one we have on hold. Shawnee Sanitary District Advisory Committee, are we ready?
No, sir, we are not. Thank you.
Frederick Winchester Service Authority, James R. Wilkins III. Mr. Rowley, do you, was he contacted?
I do not know, Mr. Chairman.
I think we have time, I'm not sure. I suspect, and that's also a joint appointment?
Yes, sir, it is.
Supervisor Fisher, could you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Board of Building Appeals, this is a county representative, which I guess since there are seven, would have been more or less mine. I did not contact him, I don't know if anybody else did or not, but probably I should check with him.
We can do it for you if you'd like, Mr. Chairman.
Historic Resources Advisory Board, Back Creek, are we ready for that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That concludes the committee appointments. We'll move on to a request from the Commissioner of the Revenue for a refund, Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated June 24th, 2014, to authorize the Treasurer to refund a taxpayer the amount of $2,792.54 for the half of 2011, all of '12, '13, and '14, real estate taxes based on proper filing of proof of 100% and total disability directly due to military service as required in the Code of Virginia. Code of Virginia changed as a result of the constitutional amendment that took effect on 2011. Taxpayer's name cannot be made public because of the applicable legal requirements as to privacy but is known to the Commissioner, the Treasurer, and the county attorney on a confidential basis. This is pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.1, 3981A, Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The county attorney hereby notes his consent. The Board of Supervisors will also need to act on this request for approval of a supplemental appropriation as indicated in the Commissioner's memorandum.
Any questions to Mr. Rowley? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a move for approval of the refund as well as the supplemental appropriation.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor De Haven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess, discussion? Hearing done, Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Mr. Rowley?
Yes, sir.
They conclude?
Yes, sir.
Then next is a request to schedule a work session with the Frederick County Economic Development Authority. Mr. Rowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We, meaning the Economic Development Authority, would like to meet with the board in lunch and work session to discuss the transition from the Economic Development Commission to the EDA, the EDA Board makeup, the EDA recommendation on signage along major routes in the county, and a discussion of the economic development strategy and direction. We've offered the following dates, August 11, '14, '18, and '19.
Okay, let's go with eliminations. I'm out the 18th. Anybody else have a bad one?
A 14th is not good for me.
18 and 14, any others?
About 19 being a good day. Tuesday, 19, is that good for everybody?
All right, that. The 19th? Mr. Rowley, I believe we have a consensus on 19.
Thank you.
Length of the meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Approximately an hour and 15 minutes.
All right, we'll move on to the Public Works Committee. Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Chairman, the Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, June 24th, at 8:00 a.m. There's one item before you this evening, and it's the proposed increases in building inspection fees. They have not changed since, I believe it's 2006. Mr. Chenary has proposed a very comprehensive list of all the changes that's in your packet tonight. I'm not going to read through all those, we'd be here for quite a while. But there, I thought there were some good comparisons he did with, you know, specific sizes of commercial buildings to give you an idea of the slight increase in fees. The committee unanimously endorsed the minor increases in the building inspection fees, and I would so move.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And I think a second by Supervisor Hess, discussion? Our hearing on all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, next we have a public hearing on an ordinance amending the special assessments of Russell 150 Community Development Authority. Who's handling?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Williams, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is an ordinance to amend the 2006 special assessment ordinance for the Russell 150 CDA. By way of brief background, the CDA, which operates as an entity separate in all respects, legal and financial, from the county, issued approximately $21 million in bonds for improvements within the CDA district back in the 2006 timeframe. No part of the $21 million involved county funds, and the county is in no way responsible for the repayment of those bonds. Private investors purchased the bonds, and then the special assessments under that ordinance required the owner of the property within the district to pay the assessments, which would then repay the bonds. These assessments are, again, separate from regular county real estate taxes. The project failed, and ultimately approximately $5.5 million of the bonds remain outstanding. Payment of the CDA assessments and the penalties and interest on them likewise remains outstanding due to the failure of the project. The current assessment structure is based upon repayment of the full $21 million of bonds outstanding and is therefore incorrect. The proposed ordinance amends the CDA assessments to correct them to correspond to the lower bond balance outstanding and resets the payment schedule for the CDA assessment. The proposed ordinance has no impact on regular county real property taxes. Any outstanding regular county real property taxes, and we understand that amount, including penalties and interest, to be not more than approximately $124,000, remain outstanding, including penalties and interest. That is the summary of what the ordinance does. I'm available to answer questions. We also have the CDA's counsel here and representatives of the landowner, and once we're done with that, this is a public hearing item.
Questions to Mr. Williams?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure whether it's the appropriate time to bring it up, but I did speak today with the county attorney, and the information, he had provided us some information subsequent to the packet being distributed. And in item number three of the ordinance, the revised version that he presented to us the other day via email, the word ordinance appeared three times in the first version, and it was changed to amendment. And I think after discussion with the attorney, I think we, he was in agreement that that should read ordinance rather than amendment.
That is correct.
I just distributed pages, copies of pages two and three. On page, the second of those sheets is highlighted those places where the word amendment appears. I do have some other suggestions for change in wordings, I'm not sure whether this is the appropriate time.
In briefly looking, I think they'd be better after the public hearing.
Okay.
Certainly those are editorials on the first part. Did any of the other identified folks wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Roger Wiley. I'm an attorney from Richmond, and my role in this transaction has been to serve as counsel to the five citizens that you've appointed to serve as members of this Community Development Authority. I've reviewed the documents that you're being asked to approve here, and I met with the CDA this afternoon in a public meeting, and by unanimous vote of those present, they approved, signing the amended memorandum of understanding and also requested that you proceed to approve the ordinance. Thank you, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Those present were how many?
Three of the five. I think it's summer vacation time, it was tough to get everybody there.
Any questions, Mr. Wiley? Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Ty Lawson, I'm here on behalf of the other parties to the memorandum of understanding and the amended one that's before you, which is the property owner and also the bondholders. We're here for the approval of the amendment to correct, as county attorney pointed out, an erroneous amount that currently exists with the existing memorandum of understanding, and that, to be precise, is for a $21,155,000 obligation. That was the original amount that was approved back in '06 pursuant to certain agreements to build out the property that we know as Russell 150, we're calling it Heritage Commons going forward. That money was supposed to be used to build certain improvements. Agreements were signed by my clients, the county was certainly a participant, the CDA Board was a participant, and it suffices to say that those agreements have been breached, they're terminated, and there are numerous failures along the way, probably starting with the fact that it was determined when this was underway that the improvements couldn't be constructed even for that enormous amount of $21,155,000. We also, as we got into it, found that the money had been misspent by the prior owner and developer, and I bring this up because there's been some discussion about agreements that folks entered into. No one entered into an agreement to allow for that kind of activity and behavior. In May of 2013, you all, after a recommendation from the CDA Board and a request from the property owner and bondholder, approved an amended term sheet, and you did that for good reason. You did that actually to correct the erroneous number. The $21 million number didn't exist at that point, and that is because after the defaults, the money that had been paid, all private money by my clients, some of it had been returned. Most of it had been spent. The balance is spent and it's gone, and it remains to be serviced. But you all voted in May of 2013 to enact and agree to an amended term sheet, which is simply to finance the remaining balance over the remaining term of the original obligation. It was a 30-year term when this started. What's left is approximately 22 to 23 years, and the exact amount is in your ordinance, but it's $5,749,000. The key to tonight is to essentially embrace and endorse what you all have already done with the CDA Board has already done, and frankly, all the parties to this agreement have asked for, and that is to have a public hearing and to allow for an approval of an amended memorandum of understanding. That is by statute how this thing was originally created way back in '06, and I believe it's actually '07 when it was presented to this, to this board and your predecessor board. And it was done and conducted at a public hearing, which is what the statute requires. So those same parties are here before you tonight, the most recent of one acted this afternoon, the CDA Board, and I need to point out, we added one other party, and that's the bondholder. They're the ones that paid the $21,155,000. No one else. There's no public money. Can't emphasize that enough because along the way, there's been some suggestion that there's public money in this. So what remains to occur is to have this public hearing, to hear if there are any comments, and with that, we believe we can finally, and what we should do, and what is being asked of you to do, is to amend the memorandum of understanding to reflect the correct balance of $5,749,000, and that that be paid out of and from the property owners of the property within the Russell 150 Heritage Commons only. It's not to be paid by the public. Mr. Williams did a great job of explaining this is something different than real estate taxes. Only the owners of the property within those 150 acres are, have ever been obliged and obligated to pay, and that will remain going forward. And so again, we're following a ceremony, we're having a public hearing, and what we ask that you all do is approve the amended memorandum of understanding, which incorporates by reference the term sheet that you all approved a year ago, May 2013. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Anyone else, other than the public hearing? Although not identified with Mr. Williams, the Treasurer is an integral part. Mr. Orndoff, did you wish to make comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Bill Orndoff, Freddie County Treasurer. With regards to some of the issues, with regards to this proposal, as Treasurer, it is important that my office comply, apply the county ordinances in the Code of Virginia in a consistent manner to all county taxpayers. This allows for equity and fairness to all. It appears that the request before you deviates from those principles, and therefore I can't support this request. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Orndoff? All right, now we'll conduct a public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the special assessment for the Russell 150 Community Development Authority and authorizing the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding by and among the Board of Supervisors, the Russell 150 landowner, and the Russell 150 Community Development Authority. If there's anyone here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance amending the special assessment, please come forward, give your name, magistrate or district, limit your comments to three minutes, please. Is there anyone? Yes.
I'm actually a city resident, but my family owns property, I believe it's in the Shawnee District. My question to the board, in listening to all of this and reading the information, was my concern was as this project goes forward, that all taxes, all the real estate and property taxes that were due prior to, when the property was purchased, I believe on the courthouse steps, and the subsequent fees since then be paid. As a community resident, and viewing the businesses and people that live in Frederick County and the values that are put forth, I think everybody pulls together and pays their taxes accordingly to use the resources and to build this community as a fair and equitable place. That was my concern in all of this. I have to admit, some of it's over my head, but that part was a very large concern to me because I know that everyone in this community pays their taxes, and if something happens, you all make great arrangements for them to be able to pay the fees accordingly. But I think that's very important for everyone to feel that they are heard and that they are a part of this community and that we all act in accordance in a fair way.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Signee will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of suggestions for wording change, even before the proposal. I more wanted to throw it out for the board. Again, in the handout that I had, the first item down there where it says, whereas these events have caused the amounts of the special assessments originally imposed to become erroneously high and in need of correction. I might, I just have a little bit of a problem with the word erroneous, it's like we can't add two and two. And I would like to suggest that that sentence be changed to read, whereas these events have caused the amounts of the special assessments originally imposed to be in need of correction. And then on the first phrase of the next sentence, changing erroneous to needing to be corrected.
Well, I had a chance to look at them myself and must say that I had support for them, but I'd probably like to hear from those people. I think what somebody's trying to do is get rid of the angry words. Somebody else took out delinquent. Supervisor Hess would like erroneous. I don't think they changed the intent or the meaning, but from those parties, either the attorney for the CDA or the other parties, anybody care? If you'd speak to it, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I will speak to that because I believe that sentence was added, or that phrase was added in both places at my suggestion. The reason I wanted the reference to the current, the old assessments being erroneous is that that is the basis under which the Board of Supervisors and the CDA have the authority to change an assessment, is if it is erroneous. If the assessments were not erroneous, you arguably wouldn't have any more ability to change them than you have a regular county tax assessment.
Thank you, sir.
I think that answers my question.
All right. Any other questions? Is the board ready to take an action?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Lofton? Supervisor Hess?
Could we ask him to repeat his explanation of the amendment to ordinance in item number three? Does that germane to this?
I believe he proposed it, but I believe Mr. Williams spoke to it and said that that change should be made.
It was apparently in cutting and pasting, as I understand it, that where it appears, similar language appears in the memorandum of understanding, and there it's appropriate to use the term amendment, but in the ordinance section where the similar language appears, it should refer to ordinance rather than amendment.
Okay.
Looks like CDA Council agrees as well. So I think the recommendation before you stands with just those changes where ordinance is replaced by, or amendment is replaced by ordinance.
Yeah, and that was just the last version we received. Prior versions had said ordinance.
Is there an action the board desires to take?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the ordinance amending the special assessment for the Russell 150 Community Development Authority and authorizing the First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding by and among the Board of Supervisors, Russell 150 landowner, and Russell 150 Community Development Authority as amended.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to approve?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, it states that no county tax revenues or other county funds have been or will be expended for these purposes, and I'm assuming that means the real estate taxes also. There's no public money account, I just want to reiterate that. Thank you.
I might point out that that appears both in the ordinance and in the memorandum of understanding, the amendment to the memorandum of understanding.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Collins?
We have struggled this for quite some time now, and I'm just a simple country attorney, but it has been a convoluted, complex mess that was created when we, when this first memorandum of understanding was created, and I want to make sure that the public understands that we are not, these assessments were not monies that were necessarily due to the county, and that in no way are we forgiving taxes that were due to the county. I want to make sure that that's clear, that the taxes that are due on this property are still to be paid on this property. The penalties that are due on this property are still going to be paid on these properties. The special assessment was money that would have been, the developer would have paid back to himself based upon his own agreement when he entered this contract years ago, and that this cleans up a mess. And the only way that, this is the best of the worst And the only way that, this is the best of the worst conclusions we could come up with to be able to allow this property to move forward. It doesn't matter who owned this property, who possessed this property, this issue is going to continue to plague this property. So I want to make sure that it's clear, that it's confusing, convoluted, what we're talking about assessments and millions of dollars, everyone gets a little anxious, but the tax money that's due to Frederick County is still due, the penalties are still due, and we're still going to, we are still seeking our monies that are due. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to agree with Ms. Collins on what he said. I think he couldn't have worded it better. It's a mess. It's been a mess. It was a mess before I came here, and it's still a mess. I think it will still be a mess after we leave, after this vote. It's going to be a while before anything transpires, but in the, my opinion, that if we don't do something, then we get to look at a piece of property staring us in the face, which could be a tax value down the road to Frederick County, and hopefully by opening this gate, we can move in that direction, and it will benefit the taxpayers and the public here in Frederick County. There's just so many ins and outs and so many personalities, but I want everyone to know that as far as I'm concerned, and Chris worded it very well, this is, my opinion's being based on what's best for Frederick County, not is what's best for the owners of the property at this time, nor future developers, or anybody else that comes into this deal. They will pay, and they will have to come before this board for rezoning applications. They'll have to come here prepared to do business with Frederick County. So by doing what we're doing, hopefully we have released this piece of property to now go back to where we could, at base one, and start again. Thank you, sir.
Other discussion. Well, I'd like to take a crack at a little bit better simplification. I've never thought it was reasonable or the right thing for the people who are owed money on this project to have to pay interest and penalty on the money that's owed them.
Agreed.
That's my attempt at more simplified verbiage. Are we ready to vote? Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Haven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye in the ordinance amendment to the, to, ordinance amending the special assessment for the Russell 150 Community Development Authority is approved. We'll move on to our next item, which is a planning commission business item, public hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a request to allow the use of private streets for all types of developments in the R5 residential recreational community zoning district. Now, currently, the use of private streets in the R5 is only permitted within age-restricted communities and only if approved by the Board of Supervisors. Now, the amendment before you tonight proposes to allow the use of private streets within all types of developments, but it would still require a Board of Supervisors waiver. Now, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this at their June 18 meeting, and they recommended approval with a number of revised requirements. I won't go through all of them, those are in your agenda. But as I stated, they did recommend approval, and tonight we are seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on this proposed amendment. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Questions of staff.
Thank you.
We'll now conduct a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning, Article Five, Planned Development Districts, Part 502-R5 residential recreational community district, Section 165-502.05, design requirements. Proposed revisions to remove the requirement that R5 communities must be age-restricted communities to qualify for private streets, inclusion of additional design standards for private roads, and maintenance responsibilities of the private roads by the Property Owners Association. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? If so, please come forward, give your name, magistrate or district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Ty Lawson, again, for the record. I'm here on behalf of the property owner, the applicant.
Sorry, Mr. Lawson, I probably should have called upon the applicant before the public hearing, so I'll delay the public hearing and let the applicant speak and see if there are questions, and apologize to the audience.
Hopefully, I don't trigger any questions or comments, but just for the record, and I know you all have reviewed this very patiently, numerous committees, and certainly the Planning Commission, I just wanted to comment on the staff report and highlight, and I'm sure you all noticed it, but the standards that are added to the proposed ordinance, which is K1, and then it's I, II, III, et cetera. Those standards came as a result of our last Planning Commission meeting, and we wholeheartedly endorse those and appreciate those. And frankly, I think it's in comment to your comments, to your committee comments, we want standards. We want to know that these roads are not going to be asked to come back into the public system, and we really, we really do appreciate the Planning Commission's study of this. They've looked at it as many times or more than you all have. You all asked for those standards. They are here, and of course, all we're asking for is the ordinance, the ordinance to allow a property owner in the R5 district to appear before you all and ask for permission to install private streets. We're a little unique, because of course, what we're really asking for is to finish. We already have permission to build private streets. We've looked at some of the numbers, where it looks like we're probably already about 80% with the age-restricted terms of landmass, so all we're looking for, and what we will if this ordinance is approved, will be back before you and asked to be able to finish, to do the remaining 20% with private streets, and yes, with these standards. We completely agree with these standards, and before, we had talked about meeting or exceeding VDOT standards, and this puts it in the book, so to speak. And for what it's worth, it creates a great standard for others, should they want to appear before you. They're going to have to meet this same high standard. And the last piece was that, we got this from VDOT, if we build to these standards, we're looking at 30-year roads, if we continue with the topping and the treatment going forward, it buys you another 10 years, and it goes on forever. And those are great standards, and what that means is they'll remain private streets with very high standards well, well into the future, and certainly beyond any of our lifetimes. So, we appreciate the opportunity to finally bring this to you, and we appreciate staff and Planning Commission's comments, and believe you have a really good ordinance here. Thank you.
Questions of the applicant.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Collins.
Where are you going? Thought I wasn't going to have anything. Go ahead. Sorry. How many lots total are available in your subdivision?
I'll have to defer, but it was approved way back for, I believe it was 12 to 1500. I know we've scaled it down from that with the layouts that have been done.
Do you know approximately how many lots you've already sold?
Hobie Mitchell will answer that, if that's okay.
I like seeing other lawyers sweat.
Me too. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Leonard S. Hobie Mitchell. I'm the CEO, President of Lansdowne Development Group, and the managing member, partner of the development. There are a total of 2,135 units approved. We have 545 attached units. Originally, there were some multifamily units approved, but we have decided not to do apartments, so we're going with basically it's all fee simple product. There are 168 or 66 existing homes that are occupied, and we have contracted with Shea Homes for another 765 units. So that's the total right now of the active adult, so the 166 plus the 765 for the active adult component, and we're going to reflect that. Now, there may be more. It's all market-driven, but we know we have at least that, and Shea has already been pretty successful. And if you're not familiar with Shea Homes, they're out of, based out of Phoenix, Arizona. They're probably, I'll call it the Mercedes-Benz of active adult development or builders in the country. So we're very happy that they're there on the project. And then the other part of the project, the market rate, will be NVR, and that's the balance of the project. So about, I think we determined about 80% of the land area includes the townhouses of private streets, so the 20% is the single-family detached. And the modification is really related to single-family detached units. The rest of them are already private streets.
So you have 21, you have 2,135 lots available.
Correct.
And you've sold 545 lots. Is that right?
No, we've contracted for 765 lots. There's 100 for active adult, and then another 166 are already occupied residents, and many of them are here in the audience tonight.
Thank you.
Now, we're not necessarily going to build to 2,135. I think it'll be less than that, but that's what the zoning allows.
Understood.
Thanks.
Other questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Supervisor Lofton.
Little information on the sequence of events as these houses are built and the roads are built. Which comes first, the chicken or the egg, the road or the house? Can houses be built without these roads being built to VDOT standards before there's an occupancy permit issued?
Mr. Mitchell can talk to the specifics, but I will, I will tell you, and this is no different in any, in any community. They install the roads with, with the base, and they do that so that the construction vehicles can, can get in and out. And what was drilled into me throughout this process, when we were talking about the standard of the road and the standard of the base, everybody talked about wear and tear of an active adult versus a non-active adult. The real wear and tear is during construction, and so that's when the, the base is put in, and the strength of the road is there, and the durability of it, and the test is, is during the, the construction. And then after it is completed and all the construction vehicles are finished, then the top coat is on, and the pretty stuff. But the roads go in first to allow for the construction vehicles to get in. And you can further.
That's why I'm dressed casually, and he's in a suit. The process is, you have to obviously have, you bond for the improvements, you get the construction plans approved to the standards that are now allowed. And if this is approved tonight, we will build to these standards. In fact, we like those standards, because we have to be able to turn these roads over eventually into the HOA. And during the construction period, the construction period is actually where you have the most volatile potential for degradation, I can't kind of say that word, degradation, thank you. That's why I got Lori here. Because you have a lot of concrete trucks. So we actually, and what I've done historically, is we'll treat roads, especially roads that are like driveways where you have pipe stems, and we use a product called CTA, because we strengthen that, because we know they're going to be heavy traffic. Because these roads have to be inspected, just like any other road. The difference is whether the VDOT takes care of them, or whether the Homeowners Association takes care of them. So we build to these standards, and the standards that the Planning Commission recommended are really VDOT standards. Some of the advantages that we will have with private streets is that we can do things on the property that you can't otherwise do with VDOT. Example, traffic calming techniques. I was a member of the Commonwealth Transportation Board for seven years, and we fought for a lot of different things for traffic calming techniques. And with these kinds of standards, and with private streets, we can do things like, I'm not, and we're not talking about speed bumps, it's just differences of material, or you can turn things in, so we have the ability to do that with the county.
What I'm looking for, though, is the assurance that if houses are built, if roads are paved with the base, which I understand, there's usually a lot of construction activity going on while the house is being built. If, in fact, there's a downturn, if something happens with the contractor that's building it, the bond will take care of making sure the roads are finished to every house that has an occupancy permit.
Yes, and in fact, it takes it all the way through topping. So, in fact, we've replaced a lot of the bonds, here's a perfect example. We have come in and taken over and replaced all the bonds. The county could have, if they chose to, if we didn't come along, could have gone in there and actually, with the bond proceeds, is taken that money and done the improvements to the property. We've effectively now taken that responsibility on, so one of the first things when we get the houses built, and you usually don't do a lot of the repairs from a timing standpoint, because things do happen. You know, you nick, curb, you do things, things fail before you top. So we're going to do all that when we build out these subdivision sections. And right now, we have, most of them are about half complete as far as houses being developed on the certain sections. So when we build these houses, we will go in there now and make repairs, and there are a lot of repairs on the existing roads that are there right now. You've got manholes that are, need to be repaired, you got curb and gutter, you got entrances coming in, and we've got a list for that, and we plan on fixing all that, and then topping the roads. And then we'll go through the inspection process with the county and the HOA, because the HOA will eventually accept it. So, and we also, in our HOA fee structure, we try to put away money in a capital reserve account, because you know, there will be repairs down the road. So we, so I hope that answers your question. I know it's a long answer, but having done this for decades, it's, we like the higher standard anyway, just because we don't want to have maintenance problems down the road. We got our name on it, you know, we have a lot of reputation from our company and personally, so I want to make sure it turns over right, too. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to ask the staff a question?
Yes.
In fact, could talk to staff?
Any other questions for the applicant first?
Yeah. Candace is up front, she can answer anything.
I guess I'm going to follow up with the same basic question, and I want to make sure that whatever's proposed there is bonded, because I've run into a situation before where private street was not bonded, and the owners bond up with an uncommon.
No, so with this, before the plats are approved, we require bonds for all the roads. So the full construction of the, of the roads would be guaranteed through the bond. And you have, in order to get a building permit, you have to have your, pretty much everything but your sub, your top coat in.
So with these private streets, bonding is required.
Before you leave, I had a question. Please make it abundantly clear to me what the piece of paper on the, on the desk is.
There was a, a.
Like the one that's in the package?
It is the exact same text, there was a little overlap in what was struck through. There was a word that shouldn't have had the strike through.
Where does that end?
There is a sentence in K1, the third line, in the text, and your agenda provided was struck through, and that shouldn't have been.
Oh, two more words, provided that, to get rid of those?
Yeah, it should have been provided that, and then a lowercase a.
To leave them in, I guess.
Yes.
Which one is the, the plain version, is the one that leaves them in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go to the public hearing. This is a public hearing for an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165 zoning, Article Five, Planned Development Districts, Part 502-R5 residential recreational community district, Section 165-502.05, design requirements. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? And if you would please come forward, give your name, magistrate or district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, my name is Michael Reiman. I'm a resident at Lake Frederick and Opeckin District. Two years ago, this Friday, a study group of nine Shenandoah homeowners held our initial meeting with Lansdowne Development as they began their due diligence process prior to purchasing or acquiring the Lake Frederick property. We spent over two hours hearing their market assessments and their initial thoughts on developing a mixed community of both age-restricted and non-age-restricted neighborhoods. At the conclusion of that meeting, I, as the team leader over the study group, summarized the three things we believed Lansdowne must accomplish to satisfy existing homeowners' interest as they pursued their development vision for the property. First, that the age-restricted portion of the development must be of sufficient size to afford all the amenities and obligations of the then-current master development plan. Second, the key to that affordability was finding creative solutions to the operations and maintenance costs of the large and incomplete clubhouse and other community center amenities. And third, and most important, a gated access solution must be developed for the east side of the lake, so that all age-restricted of the lake, so that all age-restricted residents would enjoy the gated community design we all bought into. The first two items were accomplished fairly quickly. Lansdowne brought in Shay Holmes, as Hoby mentioned, who committed to purchasing a substantially larger number of age-restricted lots than were, than were in Lansdowne's initial market assessment. And Shay brought in their Blue Star subsidiary with a proven track record of successfully managing amenities such as ours for the benefit of active adult communities. The gated access, as we call it, or private streets, as you know, at issue, has frankly taken longer than any of us anticipated. And while that process has been frustrating at times, we do recognize and appreciate the careful deliberation that the county supervisors, commissions, committees, and planning staff needed to give to this issue. It was and is the right and appropriate approach to determining what is in the best interest of all parties. But now, the questions have been asked, the answers have been given or found, and it's time to act. Approving the requested ordinance change will enable our developer to apply to the county for permission to deliver what we, the current residents, stated as a fundamental requirement of the redevelopment plan for our community. And so, we urge you to complete the process begun two years ago and enact the proposed ordinance change before you. Thank you once again on behalf of all Shenandoah homeowners for the consideration and effort the supervisors, the commissions, the committees, and the county staff have given to this issue. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Richard Seton, and I'm a resident of Lake Frederick in the Opeckin District. I would sincerely like to thank the board for the important roles you play in, in representing the residents of Frederick County. Your questions and comments in this matter have been informed, thoughtful, and helpful. And it has underscored that we always need to explore in depth in order to understand the implications of our decisions. When I explored the 2009 core values of the board, I found in part a mission that is, quote, "dedicated to providing responsible stewardship for county funds to ensure that citizens receive the best services possible for the funds expended," as well as expanding a tax base in order to ensure a viable and thriving economy. I believe that our community meets the very intent of those core values, and that the MDP approved by the county in 2001 recognized this very fact. Continuing to permit private streets to the entire development will ensure both the best services possible, as well as an ongoing thriving economy. Our community, as you heard, will consist of some 2,100 homes, the families who have already enhanced the tax base, and who are no strangers to the responsibilities, challenges, benefits, and pride of a gated community. Our current and future streets are all built to the VDOT standards proposed by the planning commission. We understand the requirements of a reserve that will sustain future street maintenance expenses, and we bring a wealth of previous life experience and knowledge to the management of community affairs. I'm aware that the county previously had negative experiences that supported your questioning our request, but I believe that each situation must be measured and evaluated on its own merits. Those questions have been answered, and the merits attached to this community are substantial. What I'm saying is, don't equate our current status with those failed other communities of the past. There are significant differences, and we ask that you examine the differences, not just the similarities. While our previous developer was unable to complete the project as planned, one only needs to visit our community to see that there has been no loss of quality, of substance, and of pride, all of which have conveyed to the new developer. A testament to the differences between Lake Frederick and the other communities who were unable to maintain these standards. Speaking for the majority of the residents of Lake Frederick, many of whom are here now, here, we believe it's time to act on the substantial merits of this request. Lastly, thank you for giving us the benefit of another of your core values, a board that understands the importance of clear communication and a willingness to listen. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Kevin Wallach, and I reside at Lake Frederick in the Opeckin District. I would like to again thank you for providing this opportunity to come before you and speak regarding the issue of private streets for the Lake Frederick community. Let me summarize some key elements of my wife's and my support for the ordinance change recommendation sent to you by the planning commission. We believe an integrated private street development will provide benefits to all homeowners, will eliminate complexities, and avoid challenges in the governance and day-to-day management of the HOA. We believe the recommended ordinance changes will be key to properly integrating the demographic and socioeconomic considerations that brought us to this area. Thus, allowing private streets for such a community will align both costs and benefits with the residents of the community. In an age where less and less transportation funding will be coming from the state, such an alignment will relieve the county's general taxpayers of the burden of funding the maintenance and repairs of public streets therein. As previous speakers have noted, approving the recommended ordinance change will enable our developer to apply to the county for permission to deliver what we, many of the current residents, stated as a fundamental requirement of the redevelopment plan for our community. And so, we urge you to complete the process begun two years ago and enact the proposed ordinance change before you. Thank you once again on behalf of Shenandoah homeowners for the consideration and efforts the supervisors, commissions, committees, and county staff have given to this issue.
Next.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Larry Atkinson, I live in Lake Frederick at the, in the Opeckin District. Tonight's topic is about whether you will approve the county code change proposed to you, or simply vote for no change at all. I ask that you vote for county code changes that are appropriate to allow private streets, no matter in what R5 district, community they're in. I ask that you, that your deliberations tonight be guided by a principle stated by Commissioner Thomas at a recent planning commission meeting, quoting Mr. Thomas. Use of the English language has to be as specific as mathematics. If we are not extremely specific and very clear in our ordinance, we will not get what we want. To that end, I ask that you adopt code changes that are very specific and clearly understood by all readers, and that those changes meet the needs of both the county and the homeowners of the R5 communities desiring private streets. So, I ask you, one, adopt a county code change that does not differentiate between age-restricted and non-age-restricted communities. Two, adopt the planning commission's recommended changes that have been discussed earlier. And three, not in the proposed changes, but I would ask that you adopt language that requires developers or homeowners, associations that want those private streets to provide with their permit requests sufficient reasonable analysis to show that the community can meet its obligations, all future obligations, not just the private streets issue as proposed for setting up a reserve account. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, my name is Dr. Carol De La Cruz, and I'm a resident of Lake Frederick in the Opeckin District. I spoke before you in your May meeting and before the planning commission in June, and I won't repeat what I said then. Essentially, I really just want to make two points. One is to clarify some terminology that may be confusing. We are referred to here as age-restricted and non-age-restricted. All of the other literature online, information about our community calls us active adult. And I mention that because there was a question about usage of the roads, and whether or not there would be a difference between an active adult community versus a, a non-age-restricted community. So, I want to make the point that most of our residents have two cars, we may not have teenagers or young children, but some residents have older children living with them, siblings, or other people who might also be drivers. We are incredibly active community. We have people who have not only cars but motorcycles. We engage in activities every day, throughout the day, which includes golfing, kayaking, bicycling, tennis. And since nothing is within a close proximity to our homes, that means that we have to use the roads to go back and forth. So, my point being that the usage of the roads that we do have will not be that different between ourselves and our new neighbors. The second point I want to make, which I don't think has been mentioned before, is one of safety. If we are not allowed to have private roads, it means that the east side, where I happen to live, and a number of my neighbors here as well, cannot be gated. And the reason I mention that is we are unique also in that we are in close proximity to a public fishing lake. This lake is open 24/7 and is not supervised in any way. I happen to have an older dog, so if any of you are like me, you might find yourselves out walking the dog at all hours of the day and night. And I have personally seen cars coming through our community that are non-resident cars. They have no reason to be there. We have private property signs posted, there is no access outside of the community. So, for our own sense of privacy and security, we would appreciate having the opportunity to have private streets and thus a gated entrance to that. So, with that, I thank you for your time and ask that you pass this ordinance.
You told me a couple of years ago I could get constructive credit for-
Mr. Chairman, supervisors, my name is Tim Donovan, and I reside at Lake Frederick in the Opeckin District. In the past 18 months, many residents of Shenandoah have come before the county to support Lansdowne's request for an ordinance change that will allow them to apply for providing private streets and gated access to both the age-restricted and non-age-restricted neighborhoods of the Lake Frederick development. In February 2013, we presented the county with a petition of support, signed by over 80% of Shenandoah residents. At multiple meetings and public hearings, we have spoken of our personal reasons for buying into a gated access community, of our understanding of the HOA's financial obligations associated with private streets, and of the financial plan that we have done to ensure we can meet those and all other obligations of the HOA. We have spoken of the longstanding approvals for private street gated access community at Lake Frederick since 2001. In fact, we received a briefing from the board of supervisors in November of 2010 telling us about the advantages of private streets. And I have a copy of that, I'll leave it with Mrs. Perkins. We have pointed out that over 70% of the roads of the community will be private under existing county approvals, and we need to describe the challenges the HOA would face managing the community with a mix of private and public streets. Finally, we have spoken of how the development differs from other R5 communities the county has been required to deal with in the past, and how it can and will establish a new model for future residents' development. After more than 18 months of consideration by the county's board, commissions, and committees, the planning commission on June 18th overcame the final hurdle to the enactment of the resident ordinance change by defining the specific construction standards private streets must meet in order to be acceptable to the county. I would personally like to recognize Planning Commission Vice Chairman Roger Thomas for his efforts to define the standards that would be acceptable to all parties, but also protect the interests of all parties. We have worked cooperatively with a developer on private street gated access issue for two years, and on all other issues affecting the current and future obligations of homeowners in the HOA. And so, we urge you to complete the process by enacting the proposed ordinance changes on private streets before you. On behalf of all Shenandoah homeowners, we thank you again for the consideration and effort the county has given to the issue.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Although it's an ordinance amendment, the particular application happens to be a pecking.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a point of order. Is this an appropriate time to ask for an amendment to the ordinance?
I think that the, you'd have to delve into the nature of the amendment and whether it required re-advertising or-
That'd be my question, I didn't know if this was an appropriate time.
You would outline it, but perhaps we could get an opinion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I, under B, number one, on, which is on page two of the proposed ordinance, where it says the plan for development shall include 1,000 or more planned lots, I would like to amend that to say the plan for development shall include 1,000 or more planned lots, and at least 33% of those lots must be sold. I don't think, I'm not sure that changed the nature of the ordinance.
It is more prescriptive.
My question, Mr. Chairman, to that would be, how can the lots be sold before the ordinance would apply? That you would, I think it's put in a cart before the horse.
Mr. Chairman, there's probably two concerns about it. I think there probably is a valid concern about what's been advertised, and perhaps the bigger concern is, because it's really following up from what Supervisor Hess said, is what that term would really mean? What does sold mean, to whom, under what circumstances? And how one would interpret that in terms of its application to a particular situation?
If that runs, if my motion runs afoul, if the, if council believes that that runs afoul of the public hearing, I'll withdraw my motion. Of the advertisement, excuse me.
It would somewhat trouble the chairman, since it sounds more prescriptive, if council said it was okay. I gotta say that, because it does, it does sound more prescriptive to me, but I gotta get you to repeat it maybe, but I'm, I'm not the lawyer, but-
It is more restrictive.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
Supervisor Hess, did you have any other comments?
Well, no, I mean, it's kind of moot point now that Supervisor Collins has withdrawn his motion, because even the beginning of that sentence, it says the plan for the development. I don't know how you can have a requirement for lots to be sold when there's nothing but a plan.
Well, I, I guess what, I got caught up in there, I, I didn't quite grasp what Supervisor Collins was hoping to achieve, and I'd kind of interested in what that is.
Well, Mr. Chairman, here's my, here's my thought process.
Can you take me back to the specific section?
Yes, sir. Under B, developments utilizing private streets shall meet the following conditions. Under one, the first is the plan for development shall include 1,000 or more planned lots. What I would propose is requiring that at least 33% of those 1,000 lots be sold. The purpose of my questions of the applicant, or excuse me, of the developer, was that by their numbers, they have sold 35% of their current-
Contracted.
Contracted, correct. There, and maybe that's a better, better phrase. So, my concern is that a developer could come in here with 1,000. My concern is that there's the support already in existence for a new development that is going to be able to support the new road construction. And I, I agree that that is a more restrictive, obviously. That was the purpose of my motion, was to make it slightly more restrictive on developers. And if that runs afoul of the, of our advertising, then, and I can understand how that is, that's the reason I asked- the reason I asked the question, but, but that's, that's my thinking, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions? Supervisor Lofton?
Questions for staff, probably, and I don't know that this question is germane, but if it's not asked, it won't be germane. If, in fact, it says that the plan shall include 1,000 or more planned lots, if a large tract of land could be divided into 1,000 or more planned lots, but that, that take up the whole tract of land?
In our R5 district, in order to be zoned, R5 has to be a minimum of 500 acres. Density, 2.3 units per acre, so 500 times 2.3, you're not going to have a development that doesn't have 1,000 lots.
But if a tract of land were larger than that?
Mm-hmm.
Could only that 500 acres be rezoned, R5?
No.
The residue be left for some other rezoning? State RA? Would that land, unless they had access from another public right-of-way, be locked into private streets and R5 zoning? Am I clear?
No.
What I don't want is a residue parcel of land being out there that, in order to access, that you have to go through these private streets, and the developer for that residue parcel didn't want private streets.
For, for public streets to exist, you have to have contiguous public streets. So you can't go through a private street system and then create public streets, because you have to be contiguous with that existing public street system.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I didn't, like I say, I can't imagine a scenario like that cropping up.
Yeah.
You never know.
Yeah.
Like I say, question unasked, because a question unanswered. Thank you.
Perhaps the thought for another day on that is, if I understood Supervisor Lofton, is could you landlock a piece of property with a rezoned property with private streets?
No.
Because you couldn't use them to access it. What would be the relief to the, to the landlocked property? And there are properties in Frederick County that are landlocked.
You, you could certainly landlock a property...
Potentially create more.
Yeah. If, if that landlocked property has an easement through this private street development, yeah, he would be landlocked. But he didn't have any development rights anyway, because he didn't have frontage on a state road. So you're not, you're not taking anything from him. He, he just never had the development rights because he didn't have the state road access.
Well, I think, for me hypothetically, we can only take it so far, but it's worth some thought. Because would we have talked to that developer about allowing easement, allowing access to what appeared to be a landlocked property behind him? Would we have? And I don't know.
Yeah.
Because I don't have one before me. Just, it would be not a good thing to set up a scenario where we created more. So I think it's, it's worth some pondering, but I don't know that it can be solved here, in my opinion.
If I could help you real fast to a comfort level, the amendment you're looking at tonight enables a developer to come in with a request, the waiver request for the private roads. We can make sure that when we get that waiver request application, we can look at the properties surrounding it and making sure we're not landlocking anybody when we grant that waiver.
Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions? The chair's ready for a motion, if you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the request on the private roads, as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. Just for a minor clarification, with the version on the table that puts the provided back, back in, provided that back in, correct?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I voiced my concerns about this ordinance, and I, I continue to have reservations going forward. I have no doubt that this particular development is going to be able to do this and do this appropriately. I have no doubt that this is going to be successful for this developer, and I have no doubt that the community is going to benefit from this ordinance. My concern is, is that, I hope that the boards in the future that sit in these chairs are going to have the same forethought as we do with issues with private roads and, and such. So that's all I have to say.
Another discussion. I'll assume we're ready to vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Next is another public hearing on an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, zoning, Article 6, agricultural residential districts, Part 402 RP, residential performance districts, Section 165-402.09, dimensional requirements, proposed revisions to reduce the minimum front setback for multifamily residential buildings from 35 feet to 20 feet.
Go ahead.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you stated, this is a proposed revision to the front setbacks for multifamily residential buildings. As you may recall, this was a new housing type that would, that was added back in 2013 as part of the RP district revisions. Now, during the discussion with the adoption process of the RP district changes, there was a high-density residential streetscape section schematic that was provided, showing the multifamily housing type, how it could be developed. Now, that schematic depicted the building with a front setback between 12 and 20 feet. However, the text adopted for the multifamily buildings was shown with 35 feet, which is contrary to what was shown during the initial discussions. So now we have an applicant that is trying to implement this housing type, and they have requested that the front setback be reevaluated to reduce the 35 front. So the proposed amendment in front of you would reduce the setback from 35 to 20 feet. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this at their June 18th meeting, and they did recommend approval. So tonight, we are seeking a decision from the board on this proposed amendment. Thank you. I wasn't sure if my time was up.
Questions to staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll conduct the public hearing. Does anyone here would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? Did we have an applicant on this one? Okay. All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the proposed revision to reduce the minimum front setback as described.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'd second that, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Wells, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
There's no way I can support this amendment. It's like packing too many things in a box. It's getting too tight, too compact. You already got high density, and the setback just is totally unacceptable to me. It's just cramming too much into too much of a dense area. I think it's a quality issue and a societal issue.
Another discussion. Our hearing done, then we'll vote. Supervisor Wells?
No.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
No.
Supervisor Collins?
No.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes no, the motion is defeated. The ordinance will not be amended. Next is a discussion item, Master Development Plan 03-14 Madison Village. Go ahead.
Again, thank you. This is a proposal to develop 46.2 acres of land-zoned RP residential performance with a maximum of 640 residential units, and that will consist of townhouse and multifamily buildings. There's also five acres of landzone B2 business general, and that will be developed with commercial uses. The property is located on the west side of Route 522 South, approximately 1,000 feet south of the intersection of 522 and Airport Road. Now, you may recall, this property was rezoned in 2013 with proffers. On the screen is the location map. The property is outlined in black. The yellow portion is the residential, and the orange is the commercial. This is the master plan that was included in your agenda. It shows the site layout, the roads, and the land use pods. So the Madison Village development will have one signalized entrance on Route 522. It should be noted that the location on the master plan has been shifted south due to entrance spacing requirements. However, the modified entrance is still in general conformance with the generalized development plan that was proffered with the rezoning. And the master plan also depicts the interparcial connections that were also proffered with the rezoning. So the master plan for Madison Village is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and rezoning three of 2013. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their June 18th meeting. So tonight, this master plan is presented as an informational item. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. John Lewis is here on behalf of the application.
Questions to staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher?
Moving of that entrance south on 522, did that alleviate the conflict with the adjoining landowner as far as the need for a construction easement?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So no agreement is needed with the adjoining landowner in the previously depicted...
Correct.
VDOT, I understand, they say, but VDOT's perfectly okay with... Thank you.
I searched and then gave up, but it's probably here. The number of units described in the rezoning or, or noted here someplace that I couldn't find, just for information?
640.
640. And the breakdown?
There is a breakdown of townhouse versus multifamily. The master plan really only shows the pods. The subdivision design plan will show the, the unit breakdown.
Questions to staff? Thank you for the presentation and the information. Next is the Master Development Plan 04-14 of Clearbrook Business Center.
Again, thank you. This is a proposal to develop 16.8 acres of landzone B3 industrial transition with commercial and industrial uses. Now, these properties are located at 3625 Martinsburg Pike. They are located on the west side of Route 11, about 2,000 feet north of Hopewell Road. Now, the properties were rezoned in 2006 with proffers. This is the location map, including your agenda. The properties are shaded in red and outlined in black. You have Route 11 that runs along the frontage and Interstate 81 along the rear. And this is the master plan that shows the properties again, as well as the internal road network. Now, the Clearbrook Business Center will be accessed via a public street that will intersect with Martinsburg Pike. The internal road network will also provide interparcial access to the properties to the north and the south, as required with the proffers. And the master plan, it's in conformance with rezoning one of 2006. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 18th, and tonight, this is also presented as an informational item.
Questions? I guess my curiosity has to do with the proffers. Trying to, again, build the bridge between the thing we vote on, the rezoning, and what we might have asked for, or what was offered as proffers, and how did it affect the ultimate build-out of the site? And I had trouble linking those things together. Some of the print's pretty small as well. I'm looking for anything significant that was either requested or delivered in the proffers that affected this master development plan to see, how did it turn out? Or was it a transportation...
I mean, the proffers...
You can help us with that bridge in the future. I think it's what I'm always looking for.
Yes, sir.
The things that we approved, the things we inflict, how did they affect what ultimately happens?
I mean, if you like, I have the proffers for this property. If there's anything in particular you wanted... No, no.
Could you run down them quickly?
Sure. First proffer was regarding access, and it just stated that access to the property was, will be from Martinsburg Pike, limited to one commercial entrance. The entrance will provide ingests and egress to all uses on the site, final location subject to VDOT approval. They're providing a 12-foot lane along Route 11, along the frontage, which is shown. They proffered to provide interparcial connection to the north and south, which is shown on the master plan. They proffered to contribute a prorated share of signalization improvement to offset an intersection Route 11 and Hopewell and Brewstown. They proffered a right-of-way dedication, monetary contribution of .05 per building square foot for fire and rescue. They proffered out certain uses, such as gas stations, service stations, filling stations, some other, mobile home dealers, amusement parks, amusement and recreational services. So they proffered out some uses. They proffered a building square footage cap for warehousing of 20,000 square feet. They proffered a building square footage cap for material buildings and hardware and garden supplies of 20,000 square feet. And they proffered that the combined total square feet of, square footage on the site cannot exceed 128,000 square feet. And they also proffered a buffer along the southern property line, and it also includes a additional row of evergreens.
Now, in the package, maybe in that small print, were they reproduced on the master development plan?
Yes, so they're on the cover sheet.
Pardon me?
They were on the cover sheet of the master plan. So what was included in your agenda was on 11...
Hard enough, I could have found them?
It was on 11 by 17, which is what we include in the digital copies, so it may not be legible for... I can make sure that from now on, we include a copy of the proffer statements.
It would be helpful to me, I think.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? All right, thank you. Next, Master Development Plan 05-14 Snowden Bridge Station.
Again, thank you. This is a proposal for 91.8 acres of landzone M1 light industrial for industrial uses. These properties are located on Martinsburg Pike, near the intersection of 81, excuse me, exit 317. It's bounded by CSX to the east and Redwood Road to the south. Now, this property consists of two separate rezonings. The first was in 2005, and the second in 2012. If you look at the screen to your left, it was included in your agenda. This is the location map. The properties are shown in blue, and the subject properties are outlined in black. This is the master plan that shows the, all of the properties. It shows the internal road network over Snowden Bridge Boulevard, which will go, as well as the internal road network that connects into Redwood Road. Now, access to this site is provided via connection to Snowden Bridge Boulevard that would align with an access point already approved with the 2005 rezoning, which was for North Stevenson. The initial segment of Snowden Bridge Boulevard has already been obstructed, and it aligns with the Rutherford Crossing Shopping Center intersection. Now, the master plan is in conformance with the proffers for North Stevenson and Snowden Bridge Station, and it was reviewed by the Planning Commission on June 18th. And again, this is presented as an informational item.
Questions to staff? Thank you for the presentation. Next is a request to amend the sewer and water service area to serve proposed fourth high school. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may be aware, every year, we accept, on June, beginning of June, we accept comprehensive plan amendment applications. We also allow for out-of-order, if you will, board-sponsored amendments to the comprehensive plan. And what you have before you tonight is a request that we received from Frederick County Public Schools, seeking a SWZA amendment to accommodate the third, I'm sorry, the fourth high school site. And talking with Supervisor Fisher, we have a sponsorship, so that's why we're bringing it to you this evening instead of through the normal process. It's an 83-acre site that was purchased last year. It's adjacent to the Admiral Byrd Middle School and Evendale Elementary Schools, and it's at the end, eastern end of Justice Drive. Draw your attention to the map, let's see. The property we're looking at, oh, let's see if it's going to work. The current, you can see the green line. I'm going to draw it real fast. That's the current SWZA going around there. And what you see in red is the new property. So what's being requested is to take the SWZA line and draw it to incorporate the red property, the 83 acres the school board purchased last year. As you can see, you can see the track for the middle school, so it can give you proximity. And the property is also north or west of planned Route 37, so that's Route 37 alignment to the east. What we're asking for this evening is, if you're supportive of the request, we'd like to take it through a public hearing process to amend the comprehensive plan SWZA, which ultimately would give the high school permissions to use the public water and sewer system. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Wayne Lee with the school board is here. Should you have any questions for them?
Well, with Supervisor DeHaven's help, I'd like to go down memory lane a little bit. I think a couple or three years back, Planning Commission retreat, how do we, how do we handle industrial or commercial, or I think schools would have been included?
industrial or commercial, or I think schools would have been included, development outside the SWZA? Do we approve a extension outside, or do we expand the sewer and water service area? And I think that we broke with a previous practice of approving an invasion into the RA, and said, "Let's go ahead and expand the SWZA." But I want to make sure my memory's right, because I know we debated it, and make sure that we stayed on course. Do you remember?
My memory is that that has been the traditional approach. We've extended the existing sewer and water service area lines to include the new areas. We have made exceptions and stepped outside of those.
I think at that time.
Once that I recall, maybe more often, I recall.
I thought a presentation was, we expanded it for residential, but non-residential, we allowed extensions outside of it. This seems to be according to what I remembered, but.
But we had, we definitely, historically, we had extended outside of the SWZA for CNI opportunities. What we've done over the past five, seven years is tried to, I guess, capture all of those extensions and include them into the sewer and water service area.
That confirms my memory.
So we had accurate depiction as to where water and sewer is within the county.
That confirms my memory.
And that's, that's why we would like to actually amend the SWZA to show where the water and sewer can go on a map.
Consistency of behavior is all I'm looking for.
Yep.
Supervisor DeHaven?
You proposing to include only the 84 acres?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not studying, we were proposing simply to provide a SWZA around the high school site, so when they build, they have access to public water and sewer.
Supervisor Fisher?
Mr. Lawrence, just on the properties that are, I guess, south, if this is a north orientation, yeah, south of Justice Road and north of the proposed SWZA expansion there along 522, is that designated as a commercial area along 522 on our comp plan?
In the comprehensive plan, this area is actually called for some mixed use, so it's some commercial, some residential. We hadn't extended the SWZA when we did the study for the mixed use, simply because we didn't feel it was appropriate to develop at this, at that point. And that's why we're not suggesting through this amendment that we encompass additional land, we're simply saying, capture the 83 acres that the school board purchased.
What would you say if I had a couple of landowners that have contacted me? In that little triangle there?
That would require UDA as well, would it not?
Yeah, it would, it would require us to look at more things, that would require us to study the UDA aspects.
UDA, that's the key. All right.
We, from the multi-levels in policy planning, we have land use, we have UDA, we have SWZA.
Mixed use.
Sir.
That helps.
And that's one of the reasons we're proposing to request to go straight to public hearing is because we know what the use is. We don't have to study it, we know what's intended.
The request or decision before you is to rather send to public hearing or not?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move it forward to public hearing.
Are we have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven? Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Fisher, discussion. Any of us in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Board liaison reports, are there any? It's not actually a, well, it is sort of a liaison. Mr. Riley, I don't think knows when yet, but we have an outstanding request from the city for a joint finance committee meeting on courthouse and outside agencies update, but I don't think any date's been set.
We have not heard from the city.
Okay, well, I have the request, though, and it was delivered personally, so.
Okay.
I'd hate to, I hate for him to think that they need to do something else besides that, but he also didn't propose a date.
Okay.
Citizen comments? Were there any liaison reports? Okay. Citizen comments, are there any citizens here who would like to address the board on any topic? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and let me your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, my name's Kenny Bennett. I wanted to address the board about some issues. I'm from Shawnee Land District. I have been hit with zoning, and we wanted an appeal due to process, and it cost us $300 to file an appeal. We don't have that kind of money, so there should be something in play so that we can, you know, work out a, you know, a fee or something, because I was laid off in 2009, I was planning on building a house in Shawnee Land, we was forced to live in a camper. We have septic, we have water, we have electricity, and all the, you know, fundamental necessities to live, you know, the way that we are right now. It's not that we want to be in a camper, but we're forced to live in a camper because of the economy. And we've tried to do everything, I mean, if a big developer wants to come in and buy us out, that's fine. You know, this, this zoning and everything is getting aggravating, and it's causing the family real heartaches. And I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention and see what we can do to work together, you know, to try to help us and help everybody that can be in my situation or our situation at any given time.
Could I get you to repeat what your appeal was?
Zoning came to us with an appeal about us living in a camper on our lot in Shawnee Land. We have septic, we have water, we have electricity. Our plan was, was to build a house, we was buying, in the process of buying three adjoining lots that joins our lots, which gives us an acre. We was in the process of talking to some other people, of course, with the economy, you know, and my layoff, we're not able to move forward like we was planning. And it's, it's been hard for us.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Are there any board supervisors' comments?
Chairman, move adjourn.
We have a motion by Supervisor DeHaven to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second to Supervisor Fisher. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?